Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our November 10 meeting. My fellow council members will be joining us with video conferencing. And I have our Assistant City Attorney Patrick Heher to my left and our City Manager Andrew Powers to my right. And we are about eight to 10 feet apart, so we're going to skip the masks this evening, but we hope that you all use your masks at all times. And let us move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hands over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, if we may have the roll call. Ms. Rodriguez?
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bill de la Peña?
Here.
Mayor Adam?
And I'm here, thank you. All right, I don't believe we have any continuances or anything like that, so let us go to our usual COVID-19 update from Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. I'm going to keep my COVID update and comments relatively brief this evening, but ask that everyone please pay attention and take heed. The numbers in Ventura County over the last 10 days are trending very badly. And as some of you may have seen in the news this morning, it's putting us on track to potentially be returned to the purple tier, the most restrictive tier that the state has based on a variety of metrics. And I'm not going to spend time going into the details. Suffices to say, the cases are going up substantially. And the primary driver, according to county public health officials, are gatherings, both small and large, a lot of them taking place at homes and weddings and other types of activities. So our encouragement as we move into the holiday season, Thanksgiving, Christmas, as difficult as it is, please be careful and cautious. Please pay attention to the guidelines. We're all frustrated, we're all fatigued by it, I know I certainly am. But we've stayed the course and we brought the numbers down so substantially that we were able to begin reopening our various business sectors. And I care so much for them and I'm concerned so much for the impacts on them based on the restrictions that occur in these tiers. Secondly, get tested. Whether you're symptomatic, asymptomatic, if you have concern that you have been in proximity of someone, if you're going to visit a relative, take the time to get tested. We have plenty of testing facilities and plenty of testing volume in this county. We have locations here in Thousand Oaks, drive-up locations in various parts of the county. You can find all of those at venturacountyrecovers.com. And, I'm sorry, venturacountyrecovers.org. Please go on there, take a look at the testing locations there. And you can get it done for free. And results are being turned around very quickly right now, most within 24 hours. So please take the time to do that. There's an added benefit to getting tested, and that benefit is, based on the way the state calculates things, you get a bonus. They get a bonus for testing volume. And the reason for that is that they view the testing volume as weeding out cases that may be asymptomatic. So we want to have as much testing as possible from the state's perspective and from the county's perspective. It helps us have certainty on what's happening out in the community. So please consider getting tested. It doesn't cost anything for you, and results are being turned around relatively quickly. Let's please band together and do what we can as we head into these winter months here. It's been such a long road, but you know, we are hopeful that there's going to be light at the end of this tunnel in early part of next year. So that's my update. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Yeah, unfortunately, the numbers are trending against us, at least temporarily, so it's just all the more important to follow the usual instructions, wear the mask, practice social distancing, and as Mr. Powers said, gatherings are inherently a problem as well. It goes against our sociability as human beings, but as these holidays approach, I know I'm going to do this and I hope the rest of you do as well, maybe pare those gatherings down if you possibly can, so we can get this thing under control. All right, let us move on to the public comments section. If you'd announce that, please.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I was muted when you were speaking a moment ago, and I wanted to say something. You and I, and Councilman Engler and Councilwoman Bill de la Peña, have all been sitting through these weekly briefings now for many months. And it is, you talk about fatigue, I'm expressing disappointment that with all of the work that we've done to get progress, to see all of that work, I've listened to Dr. Levin and the other people, Sheriff Ayub and so forth, and to see that a few people that are just not paying attention are still holding gatherings without masks. I mean, it is, what they're doing is they're letting the rest of us down. They're not part of the, we need to be a team here. I mean, it is so disappointing for me to see the work of six months just amounting to nothing. They talk about, you know, fatigue, you know, what about death? Would that fatigue them any if a lot of people now are dying because they're thoughtless enough to gather together without masks? I mean, we all have a social impulse. We all want to get together at Thanksgiving. I didn't mean to be making a sermon here, but I am so upset that all the work we've done is just because a few people choose to just gather together and completely ignore all the warnings. I mean, it doesn't make sense. We're a great team here in Thousand Oaks. I've been here a long time. We pull together. You know, when we need to do something, we do it. And somehow, we've got to shape up. We've got to remember that we're a great city and we're not going to do this to other people. You're not just protecting yourself by a mask, you're protecting everybody else. Do you want your grandmother to die, or your health worker, or your mailman? Or, I mean, it's just incredible to me. And I don't usually speak so much, but to think of this after all the hard work we've put in, it is very depressing and disappointing to me, and I just wanted to get that out. Sorry.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Jones, for sharing those thoughts. No one said this was going to be easy, and we do ask our citizens to heed the call, and we need to persevere here. We can definitely beat this thing, but we'd rather beat it sooner than later, so let's do what we know we need to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, I echo all of the sentiments expressed by Councilmember Jones. I also wanted to let everybody know that the lines are pretty short at most of the testing facilities. I mean, we were able to walk right in, and so we are heeding the call by Ventura County Public Health to get tested, even though we have no symptoms. And so you can get in immediately, there is no wait at all, and it is free. So just wanted to encourage everybody, and whether you believe in wearing masks or not, I've been wearing masks since April or March, whenever the order came down, and I normally get sick quite easily. I haven't been sick since wearing a mask. So masks do work, and I implore everybody to wear masks whenever you're out and about, even in a social setting. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, Mayor Protem. All right, let us go to our public speaker this evening, and that would be Adam Haverstock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Adam Haverstock. I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, with a couple of updates for you this evening. First and foremost, congratulations on your reelection last week. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Chamber's annual board retreat, which was held today virtually. The Chamber of Commerce elected Natalie Yanez from EXP Realty as Chair of the Board for 2021, and we approved our 2021 Legislative Agenda, which is our annual policy document that says what we believe is a chamber. I'll be sending a copy of that document to the city clerk to distribute to you all. And one new feature it has is a policy statement on COVID-19, and it has additional detail, but in brief, it says that we know that slowing the spread is what's best for businesses in the long term, and that we're committed to doing our part to slow the spread while keeping businesses open. Next, I wanted to mention the Thousand Oaks State of the City. This is the event produced by the Chamber coming up on Tuesday, December 8th, at noon. This event will feature a welcome by the new CLU President, Dr. Lori Varlata, and the main feature, of course, is the State of the City address from Mayor Al Adam. This event is going to be virtual, online, and each attendee that registers before November 3rd gift will receive a complimentary broadcast box delivered to them, which includes gifts from local businesses, snacks to enjoy during the presentation, and other things like that. And best of all, this event is free, there's no cost at all. All you have to do to attend and to get your free broadcast box is to sign up at caneochamber.org. So we're accepting registrations now for the Thousand Oaks State of the City. And then I also wanted to mention, I mentioned last month, but it bears repeating, that Visit Caneo Valley, your tourism district, is producing some cool virtual tour videos for all of our Thousand Oaks hotels. This is going to include footage of the Caneo Valley generally, and also footage specific to each hotel. We've been going out and shooting them, and these videos will help our properties communicate how safe and clean our hotels are, and assist sales staff in bringing additional business to Thousand Oaks hotels. And I can't reiterate enough what was said by the city manager and the mayor and others about getting tested. If we don't get additional testing and we go back into the widespread tier, our restaurants and our businesses will be forced to close their indoor operations. This is extremely important, everyone needs to go get a test. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. All right, let us go on to our consent calendar. And anything to poll, fellow council members? If not, may I get a motion, please?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
All right, Councilmember Jones moves approval. Vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0, and I have two ordinance titles to read into the record. Ordinance Adjusting and Setting Rates and Fees for City Water Division Uncodified, Ordinance Number 1681 NS, and Ordinance Adjusting and Setting Rates, Fees, and Discharge Limits of City Wastewater Division Uncodified, Ordinance Number 1682 NS.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I think you, I forgot to mention that the consent calendar has an item, which is 7G, which is an expenditure to help preserve the tree on West Portera Road, about there was much to do. And the city has taken the step to leave the tree, as is for now. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, very good. We have two department reports this evening. Our first one, we're going to talk about our budget calendar and some financial updates, and our Finance Director, Jamie Boscarino, will give us that report. Good evening, Ms. Boscarino.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, city council members. I will be presenting tonight the city's biennial budget calendar, as well as a financial update. The city prepares a biennial budget. Staff has already kicked off the comprehensive budget process internally for the fiscal year 2021-22 and fiscal year 2022-23 budget. The proposed budget calendar includes study session and public hearing dates for the user fees, capital improvement budget, and operating budget. Once again, we are embarking on our budget engagement and public outreach campaign, although with a COVID twist this year. The Your City, Your Priorities campaign aims to educate the public on the city's budget process, revenue sources and expenditures, and link spending to projects and programs throughout the community. In the past, we've been able to physically get out into the community, whether it be at the annual Rotary Street Fair or the Thursday night farmer's market. Since that's not an option this year due to COVID, we are going to be focusing our efforts on a dedicated budget website, a major social media presence and campaign, and newspaper advertisements. Our theme this year, in this time of great uncertainty, is moving TO, moving toward. Although COVID has forced us to operate in ways we never imagined previously, it has also provided us an opportunity to reimagine how we provide services to the public. Through our focuses on workplace transformation, financial resilience, and technology investment, and innovation, we are dedicated to serving the community in a fresh and modern way. Switching gears now to the preliminary financial results for fiscal year 1920 and the general fund. Revenues and other financing sources, which includes transfers in from other funds, exceeded $100 million for the fiscal year. This marks the first time that the general fund revenues has exceeded that $100 million mark. We actually budgeted for a decline in sales tax revenue, anticipating a softer recession, although no one could have anticipated COVID. Our conservative budgeting was actually spot-on, with sales tax slightly exceeding our budget. And although we did experience declines in categories such as restaurants, gas, and auto sales, that was offset by large gains in online sales, food and drugs, and home improvement. We did experience a decline in transient occupancy tax revenue due to the stay-at-home orders, as well as in interest earnings, but overall, as you can see, our revenues greatly exceeded our budget. On the expenditure side, the general fund had a little over $87 million in expenditures and transfers out. The bulk of the expenditures are our investment in our people through salaries and benefits and police. We also spent over $9 million this past fiscal year in capital improvement projects, which is much higher than our average. And capital expenditures are generally funded through our reserves. At the outset of COVID, management immediately took steps to implement a soft hiring freeze and postponement of certain capital projects due to the complete uncertainty of the crisis and how it would impact our revenues. Highlighting the major capital projects this past year out of the general fund, we invested in upgrading the Civic Arts Plaza's 25-year-old mechanical systems. Technology has drastically improved the efficiency and energy savings of heating and air conditioning systems, and we are already experiencing the results of this investment through decreased energy usage and costs. We also updated the Cavali Theater and backstage rooms, which also hadn't undergone a major renovation in 25 years. The T.O. Boulevard streetscape improvements kicked off last fiscal year, realigning the intersections, widening the sidewalk, adding landscaping and features, as this is a gateway to our downtown. And not shown here, but we also embarked on re-roofing at the Civic Arts Plaza, the teen center, and our adult community center. Our investment in the community continued during the past year through grants, including construction of the Borderline Healing Garden, the design for the teen center improvement project, and the final $250,000 grant to the Boys and Girls Club for construction of the John L. Nader Family Club at Redwood Middle School. This completed the total $1 million in grants for boys and girls clubs throughout the city. We also embarked on the Thousand Oaks General Plan. The city's continued focus on financial sustainability and long-term approach towards fiscal management allows investments such as these in our community to continue to be a highly desirable place to live and recreate. As you can see from the general fund analysis, we are preliminary anticipating a surplus of $13.2 million, even despite some revenue losses from COVID. We did have some one-time revenues in fiscal year 1920, so I do not expect revenues and other financing sources to exceed $100 million in fiscal year 2021, and I would anticipate the general fund to have a much smaller surplus. The fund balance goes towards items such as future capital projects, emergency reserves, and unfunded liabilities. Based on our preliminary surplus and with consultation of the Finance Audit Committee, we will be setting aside the majority of the surplus for a COVID response reserve. And in talking about our COVID response efforts preliminarily, we have a $12.4 million COVID response reserve for utilization this year, and would potentially help offset revenue loss. We've done a wide variety of support for the community as a whole, including a $1 million rental assistance program, which is currently accepting applications. We also received over $1 million in total in additional CDBG funding from the federal government due to COVID, which we did a small business support program earlier this year, as well as we're planning coming to you at the next council meeting for additional social services support. City Council also acted to change the annual grant programs this year in light of COVID to provide additional social services support and theater rental credits, and we've also done a variety of other small COVID-related support throughout the year. And in talking about COVID support, I want to transition to an industry that has been completely devastated this year due to COVID, and that's the performing arts industry. Our own theaters are no different in feeling the brunt of the impact of COVID-related closures. Although July 2019 seems like a lifetime ago at this point, we started off that fiscal year with a bang and a record-breaking Book of Mormon production. The Cavali was then closed for almost two months in August and September to undergo the renovations, reopening just in time to celebrate our 25th anniversary. Despite this fall closure, the Theaters Fund was actually on track through February to end the year with a $100,000 surplus. Then COVID came, and the last performance in the theaters was on March 12th. Between the two closures, the Cavali in particular was closed for almost six months. Prior to COVID, as I mentioned, the theaters was on track for a surplus. All the key metrics that we look at were trending up over the prior fiscal year. Everything from attendance to rental fees, to days of use, parking fees, ticket sales, they were all beating our expectations. The financial challenges in the Theaters Fund are solely due to the COVID closures, not due to any mismanagement, poor booking of shows, or lack of ticket sales. It's entirely due to COVID. When the initial stay-at-home orders came out for two weeks, we reacted immediately by rescheduling performances during that period, with the assumption that we would be able to reopen rather quickly. This led to our hourly staff not having hours to work, and being forced to go on unemployment, and use the family's first emergency sick leave that the federal government required employers to provide. So we were able to realize some small savings in our hourly salaries and benefits costs. However, as the closures continued and we began to realize that this could turn into a lengthy closure, we began meeting with our bargaining units to discuss further language, which was ultimately presented to city council and approved in June. Based on the timing of the closure occurring towards the end of the fiscal year, the initial uncertainty with how long the closure was going to last, and the sunk costs that were already incurred on performances from March through and the sunk costs that were already incurred on performances from March through June, such as advertising and marketing costs that ultimately had no revenue offset, the Theaters Fund is projected to end fiscal year 1920 with an $893,000 deficit. So knowing at the start of the new fiscal year that the theaters were likely to be closed for a lengthy period of time, HR worked with theater staff and other departments on identifying areas of reassignment for theaters employees wherever possible. Throughout the past several months, most employees have been reassigned to key areas, such as at the library assisting with our curbside service and in the community development department assisting with COVID compliance. A few key staff are still working out of the Theaters Fund, such as in the box office dealing with refunding tickets and rescheduling performances. The preliminary estimates are reduction in salaries and benefits costs in the Theaters Fund from $2.3 million to just under $900,000 for the year. The undeniable benefit to reassigning staff instead of furloughing or laying them off is that we're well poised to reopen the theaters when we are given the okay by the state and county to safely do so. There will be no time wasted trying to rehire staff that would ultimately delay our reopening. Although salaries and benefits are a large portion of the expenses in the Theaters Fund, we analyzed each line item expense to see what other areas we could cut back on. Some savings, of course, come from the fact that we aren't holding performances, so there's no janitorial or parking costs. But there are some areas where costs can't be reduced, such as our software maintenance contracts and depreciation. Although some items led to small savings, as a whole, we are estimated to reduce our overall expenses in the Theaters Fund from $4.6 million to just $1.9 million. Despite the physical theaters being closed to the public, it's important to continue to maintain a presence in the community. The arts provides a wealth of benefits to the public, and creativity has been employed to continue to provide live performances in the age of COVID. TO Arts launched its roadshow presenting several opportunities for drive-in style performances, including the upcoming National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation showing this Saturday, which is already sold out. Staff is working on scheduling and rescheduling performances into 2021 in preparation for an eventual reopening, as well as working on a COVID reopening plan, such as seating that would adhere to potential capacity restrictions when we are able to reopen. This is all crucial in being prepared to reopen as soon as it is safe. After taking into considerations both reductions in revenues and expenses, the Theaters Fund is projected to have another loss in fiscal year 2021. This assumes that the theater is not able to reopen for performances during the entire fiscal year. At the outset of my presentation, I focused on the strong results in the general fund this past fiscal year and the ability to set aside a reserve for COVID response in the amount of $12.4 million, with one potential use of that COVID response reserve to be used for revenue losses. This chart shows what the impact would be if supporting the Theaters Fund in fiscal year 1920. And as you can see, the surplus would decline to $12.3 million, which is still a very strong result. And the COVID response reserve for fiscal year 2021 would still be over $11.5 million. Our steadfast focus on fiscal prudence and sound financial management puts us in a position where we can respond to unforeseen and unexpected circumstances, such as the COVID crisis, support industries such as the arts that have been devastated and still in the fiscal year with a surplus. Although it has been the practice at the city to not support the operations of the Theaters Fund, withdraw fund money, to not do so in this extraordinary time would be detrimental to the future of the city's theaters and the core of the city's downtown. Therefore, staff recommends the budget calendar is approved and also approval of a general fund transfer in fiscal year 1920 to cover the loss of $893,563 and to the Theaters Fund for COVID support, a general fund transfer in fiscal year 2021 as well, not to exceed $1 million for COVID support. With that, staff is available for questions. And Jonathan Soret, our Deputy Cultural Affairs Director, is also available on the line.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Boscarino. And questions, council members?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Jones.
Just a couple of things. What is meant by a soft hiring freeze? Do we still hire people in that situation?
Yes, Councilmember Jones. So a soft hiring freeze indicates that every vacant position is evaluated carefully and determined for a need for immediate filling or not. So there are positions that are held back or delayed for several months out. There are some that are held for the next budget year, and there are some that are filled. And we have filled some key positions during this time. But they're all carefully evaluated as a mechanism to be really cautious as we have uncertainty ahead.
Are revenues from online sales, are they less than we would accrue if they were local sales in our stores, et cetera?
Councilmember Jones, yes. The way online sales work is there's no direct point-of-sale within the city. So it goes to the county pool, and the county then distributes all online sales across the county to each city. So the city receives its share of the total sales tax revenue. Right now, the city is the number-two point-of-sale sales tax producer in the county, which equates to about 20% of the sales tax. So we would receive about 20% of online sales tax revenue.
And how does that relate to what we would receive if they were actually buying them in stores rather than online? Is there a certain percentage that we could understand from that?
No, it's really hard to tell because you don't know how much of that online sales revenue is actually from Thousand Oaks residents versus other residents in the county. So we could be receiving more than our share. We could also be receiving less than our share if it was actual point-of-sales. Because we don't know where the customer is, it's hard to tell whether we're negatively or positively impacted by that.
And one analogy you can use, Councilmember Jones, in thinking about that is if a television is purchased at Best Buy, we receive the full sales tax allotment. If a television, that same television is purchased over Amazon, then that we receive that apportionment from the county pool based on that 20% that Ms. Boscarino mentioned.
And I can see that because of your prudent planning, that we did have an overage in the last fiscal year ending on June 30, which I think was very good planning on your part considering the COVID deprivations that we were going through up until that time. When we do accrue an overage, is that money put into reserves? Or what do we do with money that exceeds what we had budgeted for that year?
So I'll let Ms. Boscarino speak on it. But just globally, you know, I'd first like to give kudos to the City Council. The fact that we have returned to fund balance for the last several years consistently is a tribute to the fiscal prudence of this City Council and keeping a strong focus on that and not growing long-term expenses and really focusing on those one-time expenditures. So one of the key elements that those returns to fund balance allow for is one-time capital projects. That's where our capital budget is funded out of. And so capital projects, most notably our Streets and Roads program, over the last several years, we've been able to pave in excess of 70-plus miles of streets and roads that would not have been able to have been done absent that investment that came from those returns to fund balance. I'll let Ms. Boscarino speak more directly.
Yes, thanks, Drew. As he mentioned, the primary reason for our reserves is to pay for our capital projects. And there are other areas that the reserves are for, such as we have a reserve for liabilities. We have our reserve, you know, the $8 million for our grant endowment program. So we have that reserve. We also have a reserve for our unfunded liabilities. You know, council elected two years ago to put aside $22.5 million total citywide into our pension stabilization trust fund. So we have that reserve set aside in our general fund as well. So the bulk of the general fund reserves are set aside for specific purposes. We actually have a very small amount that is unassigned and eligible to be committed towards a certain purpose.
Oh, that sounds like a very prudent way to do it. Finally, then, are our reserves, are they in the county pool of investment? Is that where we put them?
So overall, the city has about a $300 million portfolio, and that is invested in a wide variety of areas. Part of it is in the county's pool. Part of it is with LAIF, that's the state's pool. But we also have long-term investments, whether it be in our treasuries or in agencies. So the $300 million total portfolio is invested in a different variety of investment types per California Government Code.
Well, that's very good. I appreciate your prudent fiscal planning because I know there are a lot of cities that are having problems right now. And I'd like to compliment you on what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor Bob Engler here.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
Just a question. We have, having with our theater fund, unfortunately, I think, we were very close to breaking even. In fact, we broke even a little bit higher than even in the prior year to COVID. And we looked like we were on track for an even better year. And unfortunately, the theaters got hammered, as in many other industries, by the COVID response. The question I have, as we come out of COVID, hopefully within six, eight months, a year, whenever that magic day might be, is it, what is the plan? I think Ms. Boscarino mentioned the COVID, the theater plan. I just want her to flesh that out a little bit as far as are we looking at being quickly able to book acts? Do they anticipate that there will be a backlog and a demand for acts? How are we approaching that?
So I'm going to let our expert on the topic, Mr. Jonathan Soret, jump in here. He's been keeping his finger on the pulse of all things performing arts and pandemic and to really keep us well-positioned. Jonathan, would you like to speak?
Sure. Thanks, Drew. And Councilmember Engler, to answer your question, that's actually been one of the focuses that we've had since the pandemic began, which is why we've focused our efforts on not only rescheduling events that we've currently had booked, but continuing to schedule them in the future. Obviously, we're all uncertain with what the timing will be when we get the guidance, even with restricted audience capacities, to be able to move forward. But one of the benefits that our theaters has been able to reap from over the last few years, at least the last five, is that we are not beholden to booking our shows on a season. We, a number of years ago, stepped away from booking things on a season basis. So we have the flexibility to add and remove shows from our programming as the need arises or as the opportunities arise, which in a lot of cases for the touring shows, those opportunities for those larger headline tours only come into fruition a number of months ahead, usually about two to three months in advance of that performance. So with that in mind, that's why we've spent a good amount of our time scheduling and rescheduling those shows. So when we do get the guidance to be able to start to reopen in a safe manner, we can already have shows on the books ready to go. With regard to restrictions on capacity, we don't know what those are yet. But as a staff, we have worked through various scenarios of how we would look at distancing perhaps shows that would normally have fit right there in the sheer forum at the city council chambers, distancing shows that would have fit within that theater inside of the Cavali Theater. So if we're limited to a quarter of our allowable capacity or 400 seats at the max, we can take a show that would have normally been in the sheer forum, socially distance it with our audience in the Cavali Theater and still be able to move forward in producing those shows or presenting those shows, rather.
And in terms of, Ms. Boscarino mentioned that we had been able to retain some of our theater staff through this COVID issue. Is there enough, do we have enough staff to quickly come back on board to be able to turn the corner and become profitable again?
To quickly turn the corner, yes. The profitability might take us a little bit of a lag just to catch up on things. But certainly, having activity ready to move forward with is the first step in that direction. The city has been, the city has been really great about trying to find alternative work sites for our staff to be able to slip into rather than going into a full furlough or even as many other theaters have unfortunately had to do in moving with layoffs. So we, as a theater enterprise, stand very well poised to be able to grab the mantle from where we left off. We may not be at the same volume right out the gate, but certainly will have the mechanisms and operations in place to be able to move forward. So with our key staff that we still have working in the department, along with some of the staff that we've been able to reapportion to other departments in this, in the meantime, we do have enough staff to be able to move forward, really without skipping a beat.
It seems wise to keep that talent in the wings, so to speak, because this will not last forever. And as soon as we can get it back on track, it'd be great to get our theaters back open.
And Councilmember Engler, if I might add on to that, you know, that's been at the core of our philosophy and our recommendation to the council here. We have some unique talents within our cultural affairs department. Engineers that understand our lighting systems and our soundboards and have relationships with our resident art companies and our various touring acts that come through the venue. It's very hard to replace that type of specific knowledge. And so our ability to have these employees add value in existing spaces within the organization has really helped us, and I think it will help us, be better positioned than most performing arts venues to come forward. As Jonathan mentioned, I do think it's incumbent on the council to be thinking as we move into the budget process in the years ahead. We are going to be doing another two-year budget. The item before you tonight addresses last fiscal year and this fiscal year, the direct impacts of the pandemic. There are going to be lingering issues with the pandemic that are going to require very likely support on the behalf of the council through the budget process to help the theaters get back on their feet. And that's because we're going to, when we do open, we're likely to have capacity limitations. We don't know how quickly touring acts will return to our venue. We hope they return quickly. We don't know what their fees and rates are going to look like as we move forward. We don't know how many people are going to be interested in immediately returning to these types of performances or feel safe and comfortable doing so. So there's a lot of unknowns out there. And so I think it's just important to know that we're continuing to monitor that. But it's going to be very likely that the Theaters Fund itself will need some crutches as we move forward.
Thank you. Hello.
Mayor?
Mayor Protim, was that you?
That was me, but I wasn't sure whether Mr. Engler was.
Please proceed.
Go right ahead.
As I watched Jonathan Soret with a backdrop here of our newly remodeled Cavali Theater, I have to say I'm just so pleased that the, about tonight's agenda item and the absolutely necessary expenditure for the theaters. This Cavali Theater is home to so many artists. And the arts and the Civic Arts Plaza are the very reason why we wanted to get our downtown area going. And they are vital to our economy. And you have to think about $900,000 is really a drop in the bucket when you consider that before the pandemic hit, the entertainment industry, the arts industry, and its associated industries made up 4.5% of the GDP in this country. Five million employees, a $900 billion industry, and thousand... industry, and Thousand Oaks is a small slice of that. We absolutely have to save the theaters because we will come back. And I would also like to give the newest symphony a plug as I look at the backdrop, Jonathan's backdrop, that they they actually went ahead with a new season, even though nobody can really come to the theater. They recorded an entire season's worth of concerts. And it already started two weeks ago. It's available online, and the membership for these concerts, and I believe there are eight or 10 of them, is only $60 or $65. And that is how residents can support and continue to support our arts organizations. I mean, we are talking about supporting restaurants and other small businesses. We need to think about how to continue to support struggling arts organizations. And so if you can go online and donate to any of the arts organizations, whether it is newest symphony, season concert, or if it's the the Five Star or the Conejo Players or or the ballet, we need to look at those areas as well and those groups as well. So if I may make the motion to approve this wholeheartedly, I would like to go ahead and do that.
All right, very good. Thank you. And if I may add, there are some remarkable takeaways from Ms. Bascarino's report, the fact that over the last four years, we've added $32 million to our general fund. And this year, we have a $13 million surplus. I think that's amazing. We've been able to accomplish some great projects. As you saw the backdrop with Mr. Sorette, we've completely remodeled the Cavlee Theater. It's warm and inviting and ready to welcome back patrons as soon as possible. We did our our Streetscape project, which is a great start to our downtown. We built the Borderline Memorial to name a few. There's been a lot more, too. But so now we have deemed this surplus as our COVID response fund. And now we're being called on to respond to COVID, basically. And I'm we're blessed to have this fund to be able to do that. And it's our theaters that need the help. And I think I'm more than willing to vote to provide that. Our theaters are a hub for our campus master plan. And I know our theater is going to have a great recovery once things get back to normal. And and Mayor Protem has a motion on the floor. And if there's any further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Heard?
Just to be clear, just I heard her her motion, just to be clear, that we are recommending staff, staff's recommendation, one, two, and three, just for clarity.
That would be that would be the case, correct, Mayor Protem?
Yes, absolutely. One, two, three.
Very good. Better days are ahead. We've made a huge investment in these theaters, and they're going to continue to provide the kind of entertainment and the kind of gathering and bringing us together that they've done for the last 25 years. We'll do it for another 25 and beyond that. So with that, I'll call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Bill Delapena?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
That's a yes for me.
And that motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much. And on to our second department report. And we're going to talk about some emergency orders that we had in place that we're going to take another look at. And our Assistant City Manager Ingrid Hardy will give us that report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before the council this evening is to rescind and restate certain emergency orders regarding COVID-19. Federal, state, county, and local officials have taken several actions to help control the spread of COVID-19 and support residents and businesses experiencing financial distress due to the disruption the virus has had on the economy and an unanticipated loss of income. One of the most significant emergency actions adopted is Governor Newsom's executive order that authorize local governments to halt evictions, slow foreclosures, and protect against utility shutoffs. And subsequently, there is a statewide ban on enforcement of eviction orders. In addition, the City Council has taken the following actions as a local response to help protect residents and businesses from financial distress. This includes a moratorium on commercial and residential evictions for non-payment of rent through June 30th, or a date adopted by the governor, a moratorium on collection of various late fees and fines. The City Council also approved a $340,000 small business grant program, which was funded by CDBG Cares Act and in which 25 businesses have received grant awards. The council also contributed $20,000 to the Chamber Small Business Relief Fund. You recently approved $1 million in residential rental assistance, and you also approved various grant programs to support social services and performing arts organizations. Since the adoption and approval of these various actions, staff would like to update the council specifically on closed utility accounts and commercial evictions. Since March 31st of this year, there are 353 closed utility counts that were closed voluntarily. Final bills have been issued and new customers are established at these properties. Due to the temporary suspension on collections, staff is unable to collect the $62,500 in outstanding fees due. Staff is recommending repealing the temporary moratorium on closed accounts so that we can begin the collection process. Collecting on these closed accounts does not compromise or disconnect service for any existing residents, rather, again, it allows us to move forward in collecting on closed accounts. Commercial eviction protections have been in place for the past eight months, which means that for eight months, the property owner has been unable to evict a commercial tenant for failure to pay rent. The city's current eviction moratorium is in place until the governor rescends the executive order permitting cities to adopt moratoriums unless the City Council rescends its moratorium earlier. The Tenant Relief Act, adopted by Governor Newsom, provides statewide residential eviction protection, but does not provide a uniform statewide commercial eviction protection. Moratoriums on commercial evictions are only available if they are in place at the local level. Again, there's no statewide, uniform, commercial eviction moratorium. Given the changes and circumstances from when the moratorium was first adopted and there was a stay-at-home closure order with most businesses closed, staff recommends that the commercial eviction moratorium be rescinded. Many landlords have already been working closely with their tenants regarding the collection of rent. And although no local moratorium would be in place, landlords will have greater flexibility in continuing these negotiations and reaching agreements with their tenants. I'd like to remind the council that there are several protections that remain in place for our businesses. This includes a six-month window of time in which to repay any outstanding rent, and landlords are prohibited from charging penalties or interest on overdue amounts which accrued during the moratorium. In totality, including the six-month grace period, commercial tenants will have had 14 months to pay all past due rent. The item also keeps protections in place that were previously adopted by the City Council, such as temporary code modifications for outdoor dining. Tonight's action does not remove protections for residential evictions as state law has been enacted. And also, there are protections in terms of various fines and fees and the moratorium on those fines and fees that are listed before you. That concludes my presentation for this evening. These are the three recommendations that are before the City Council, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Questions for Ms. Hardy?
I've got a I've got a question.
Councilmember Engler?
Ms. Hardy, in terms of the 365 people who owe us money for the water service, the those people are no longer currently in those residences, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And no other, no other people would be affected if we were to rescind that at this time, simply allows the city to start collection on those monies in arrears?
Correct. Those are the accounts that have been voluntarily closed.
In terms of the commercial moratorium that we have had in place and rescinding that commercial moratorium, can you brief me a little bit on what assistance commercial property owners have have received during this COVID time?
From the city, the commercial properties have received or have been offered the Small Business Grant Program that was approved by the City Council. There are also federal programs available to businesses through the Paycheck Protection Program.
Okay, those are those are for the actual businesses, but the property owners themselves, have they been party to any of the PPP-type money or any of those benefits that the federal has passed down through the state?
Ms. Bascarino, perhaps you can speak to that. From a PPP standpoint, I don't know how that affected on a property owner basis. I think one of the things you had to demonstrate was employees, as it was payroll protection program. So not sure unless they were owner-operator of a business if that would have impacted them.
Right, and it was for very specific items such as payroll or for your own unpaid rent that you may have on your own building. So not necessarily somebody who hasn't paid you, but you not being able to pay your rent. So it was very specific in the PPE what you could apply that funding towards. So, you know, yeah, Drew, as you mentioned, unless it's something specific where they're able to pay their staff or they're able to pay their own mortgage rents, I don't know that it would be able to be used for that for the landlords.
Thank you. I have some other comments for later, but that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Jones.
Have we analyzed what effect doing these three things will have on our community? I mean, is there any way that we can ascertain the problems, you know, that people that own rental property and and, you know, owe different bills and so forth? What the rescinding of these things will do? Have we analyzed the impact of all this?
So I'll I'll take the first crack at that, and I'll let City Attorney Noonan chime in as as needed. But in terms of analyzing it, it's it's not really, the landscape is so varied and diverse that it's it would be really difficult to analyze that landscape. I think what we what we have brought before you tonight is this has been in place for a considerable amount of time, certainly much longer than we had ever anticipated it would be in front of you. We felt it was warranted that the City Council weigh in. Because what you have, what you have in effect done by this action is put into effect a situation in which commercial property owners are able or not able to correct, collect rent if they haven't been able to work out a situation with their tenants. And so that is a challenging circumstance. We have folks that we're hearing from in that sector that are owe mortgages on properties and have significant concerns about the ongoing. The moratorium itself does not relieve the business owner from paying the back rent. They will have, from the moment that the moratorium is ended, they will have to come up to current rent terms or reach an agreement with their landlord within six months. So the protections that are in place were simply that. They were designed to be protections to help guide through the darkest hours of the pandemic. Now, we're at a juncture in the pandemic where we felt it was important that the City Council weigh in as to where things stand. The circumstances are different today than they were in the early days when you took this took this action. You saw a letter in the packet tonight from some commercial property owners expressing their concern around this and the length of time that it's going and expressing concern about whether some of these tenants will ever be able to come come together. From the beginning, we have taken the position here, and we continue to do so tonight, that the city does not want to be a mediator in these processes, and we won't be. That the city is is simply encouraging landlords and tenants to work together based on their unique circumstances. It's hard to paint these all with the same brush. You've got some that are large gym owners and gym spaces. You've got small mom-and-pop businesses. You have larger regional and national chains, and they all have different circumstances, and they all have been affected differently by the pandemic. The order that you have right now is a blanket order. It covers everything in in the in the city. And so we felt it was important to bring the item to the to the council for discussion.
Is there any particular reason at this date is the timing of this action? You talked about the darkest hour. Seems to me, based on the item we spoke about at the beginning of our meeting, you know, and I understand we need to give landowners and people that rent buildings, I mean, I mean, they need relief, too, and we can't do this forever. But it seems to me that the timing of this, based on the fact that we're seeing a renewal of the COVID, do, in my opinion, to thoughtless activities of some people, that we're not, you know, in the road to recovery right now. Seems like with the cold weather coming on and, you know, these months of holidays where people want to get together, that that we're not really seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, to use an overworn figure of speech. But is there anything that inspired coming to the council on this specific, specific date with this matter?
So so there's a couple of factors that are driving timing around this. First of all, the close of the legislative session is the most important aspect. So there was hope, I think, on the part of all cities, that the state legislature was going to provide state-level guidance as it related to commercial evictions. They did that for residential, and that is now what governs residential evictions across the state. It's a it's a clean, ubiquitous set of rules. They did not do that on the commercial side. And so with that, we're left with a local order that the council hasn't revisited revisited in many months, and therefore, that that is the primary reason we're before you tonight. Now, this, you know, certainly the turn in numbers has occurred in the last week. We've been preparing for this item as we as we do with items for several weeks, and we prepared it in conjunction with the with our movement into less restrictive tier. And as I mentioned at the outset, that's certainly dynamic. This whole situation is dynamic. And the less restrictive tier was providing more business openings, and therefore, a lot of the property owners were expressing concern about not receiving rent when businesses were, in effect, operating.
Thank you. I understand it's a difficult situation we're in, and we'd like to try to do the right thing by everybody. So I, you know, I understand we need to give relief to the property owners. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Jones, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just make one more point. Councilmember Jones mentioned at the end, a relief for the property owners. I want to stress again, because I think it's important for those listening tonight and watching at home, this, you know, our fervent belief is that landlords and tenants need to come together in these difficult times. Structures of leases and terms in small business, medium business, large business are very complex. And so to take to take them with a blanket approach. complex, and so to take them with a blanket approach is very, very difficult. And so we just, I want to continue to emphasize that we don't want to see our small businesses slip away from us, and we hope that our landlords are out there, and they don't want to see those businesses leave those commercial spaces as well. And there needs to be practical, prudent approaches that are individualized to each of these situations in order to help us weather through.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't think this is so much a question of timing as it is duration. As has been mentioned, this has been going on since March, eight months. Back in March, we had a much different situation than we have now. We had complete closures, and there was a lot of instability, a lot of uncertainty. Businesses were shut down. Here we are eight months later. We've thrown hundreds of thousands of dollars at small businesses. The city has, the county has. We've done, the federal government's done the Paycheck Protection Program, and we are now in a tier where a majority of the businesses are open, they're operating, anywhere from 10% to 50% capacity, whether it's a shopping center, hotels, restaurants, fitness places. So things have changed, and, you know, I think the intervention has run its course at this point, and as Mr. Powers said, now is an opportunity, when this mor, if this moratorium is lifted, for landlords and tenants to negotiate going forward leases that, and rental agreements that reflect this new paradigm that we happen to be in at the moment, and to really assess the long-term viability of these businesses. I think that that's important. And I will say, anecdotally, from folks that I've been talking to, the majority of businesses are, in fact, paying. They are paying, and they're paying their deferred rent as well. So we're not talking about the vast majority of businesses. We're talking probably a smaller amount that are affected by this. But I think in the long run, this will be a positive, because these rental agreements will be hammered out to reflect the new situation that we're in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protam.
I'm glad that you mentioned that there are business, small business owners who have continued to pay the rent, and that is absolutely true. There are some who were able to reach an agreement with their landlord and others were not, and then they continued to pay. We want to keep in mind that this commercial moratorium, it was structured much like the residential in that payments would be deferred, but it's not as though property owners are forgiving the rent. They will receive whatever they're missing a little bit later down the road, hopefully. So I wanted to keep that in mind, and that I would like to urge landlords, property owners, to continue to work with their tenants, to make sure that nobody else will be out of business. We really need to stem the tide. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I believe if this moratorium is lifted, that motivation will be there to negotiate. Right now, the motivation may not be there, because one does not have to pay if one relies on this moratorium. Mr. Powers?
Yeah, and I just want to make, and those were great comments by Mayor Protam, and it reminded me to make a couple of additional comments. You know, while we don't have a picture specifically of how much rent's being paid or not paid, we do have some data points that would lend us to feel like businesses have been able to continue making payments, and most notably in sales tax. The state created a program. That program allowed for interest-free deferment of sales tax if you were a small business under a certain amount of annual sales. We anticipated that quite a few businesses would take advantage of that program, but what we're seeing from our sales tax results as we came forward was that, in fact, most of those businesses were coming full due on their sales tax and not taking advantage of that program as to not add on an additional liability going forward. Secondly, one of the, you know, big concerns that I think is important to mention is the longer a moratorium goes on, especially a moratorium that requires full repayment, as Mayor Protam mentioned, those dollars add up. And in keeping something in place like that, you do have to weigh, and that's why we thought it was important to bring to the council, you have to weigh that, are you creating a scenario that could lead to bankruptcy and other financial hardship because you're adding on significant amounts of money over the course of extended periods? And so it's for those reasons we brought it to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. All right, if there's no further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the recommended action.
Very good. I was about to ask for that. And we have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Jones. Can we vote, please?
I would vote yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Bill Della Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you very much. And that is the end of our business for this evening. Mr. Powers, do you have some follow-up items for us?
Yeah, just really quickly, we do have a meeting next week. Because of the way Thanksgiving's falling this year, we do have a meeting back-to-back weeks. So we'll be before you with an amendment to our 2019 Community Development Block Grant item. That is to reflect some additional CARES Act money that's coming in through CDBG. We had an allotment of that that was utilized earlier in the year. We are going to be bringing that additional allotment forward with a recommendation of what that program is going to look like for the year ahead. And we do have a groundwater management plan item that needs to be adopted, and Council on Aging Senior Master Plan item as well. And the rest of it is still taking shape, but should be a relatively straightforward meeting next week, Tuesday the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And Mr. Heer, we have some closed-session items, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two closed-session items tonight. The first one is conference with legal counsel on existing litigation regarding the City of Thousand Oaks petition for review before the California Regional Water Quality Control Board filed on December 16th, 2019 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision A. The second matter is a conference with legal counsel for pending workers' compensation claim with a significant exposure to litigation regarding Chris Meskey pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision D-2. I do not believe we will have any matter that will require reporting after the closed session. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. And thank you, everyone, for your work this evening and for tuning in. I'm going to adjourn this meeting to one week from tonight, November 17th. Good evening.